Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of March 28th, 2024?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone McWiggin, I second.
All is in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWiggin, yes.
Thank you. Okay, going on to first selectmen's updates. Just want to mention that Greenwich again received a 2023 Tree City USA designation. It's in conjunction with the Arbor Day Foundation, the U.S. Forest Service, and the National Association of State Foresters. So, we get that every year, but it's still something to be proud of. So, I want to thank everybody, especially the Tree Conservancy, Dr. Kramer, Parks and Rec, and everybody else there that keeps us at the top of that list. So, good job there. Last weekend, a couple of successful events, scouting for food. Want to thank everybody who contributed to that effort again. Goes to the, the proceeds go to the Neighbor to Neighbor Organization, and it's certainly something that's very much appreciated. And then we had the successful Earth Day proclamation and rethink waste Greenwich event over at Christ Church. Lots of awards given out there, and my colleagues were there. And I want to thank everybody involved there, including the Sustainability Committee. This Tuesday, I'll be doing, the 16th, I'll be doing a fireside chat at the Chamber of Commerce. So, if you want to come there harass me with some questions or concerns, that's a good time to, good chance to do that. Also, the 16th, we're going to have Miles Carnegie be the acting first selectman for the day. So, if you've got any complaints, that's where they should go that day. And then on the 17th, we're going to have, it's the anniversary of the Ukraine war. So, we're going to have our friend Olga Lipinyenko here, 11:30, to do just a little ceremony in the front.
What date is that again?
That's the 17th. That's just outside. It won't be long, but we wanted to just keep that front and center on people's minds. And after that, I'll be going over to the Rotary, for those who remember there, for a talk with them. And then that night, I am honored to be speaking to the Italian-American Legislative Caucus in Middletown. It's their education fund dinner. It's a big deal up there in Connecticut. So, I'll be looking forward to that. I haven't been up there in a long time, but it's one of those events where they let the legislature out early to go to. So, look forward to seeing all my old colleagues and friends up there. On the 20th, adopted dogs having an event for their alumni dogs over at Coffee for Good. So, that's the 20th, Saturday. If you're an animal lover, that's a fun event to go to. On the 21st, we're going to have the First Annual Earth Day Celebration at St. Barnabas Church, up in the back country, up on Lake Avenue. Also, on the 23rd of this month, I'm going to be doing the Community Block Development, Block Grant Public Hearing. So, lots of good causes there. We've had, I believe, 1.6 million in requests, and we only had about 900,000 to give out. So, they did a really good job at spreading it around. Of course, some people are always going to be disappointed because there's a lot of need. There's a lot of need. But I think they did a really good job at spreading it around for really good causes. And on the 24th, Greenwich Tree Conservancy, we're going to be doing our tree planting and proclamation for Arbor Day at North Mayana School. That should be at 12 o'clock that day. And then, if I can read my writing, Greenwich Public Schools is doing their community service awards also on the 24th. So, that's in the Performing Arts Center at Greenwich High School. So, that's it for me. Good morning, Lauren.
Good morning, everyone. Thanks for the dates. Also, Janet and I, over the weekend, so in addition to the Earth Day events and proclamation on Saturday, on Sunday, we were fortunate to, and I see Lucy in the audience, you were there as well. Between the Girl Scouts and the League of Women Voters, we had an event at Town Hall, Women in Government, and Janet and I had the pleasure of taking the Girl Scouts on tour of Town Hall and just talking about what we did. And to translate, Fred, not many people understood first selectmen and selectmen. So, we basically had to say that you are the principal, and Janet and I are the assistant principals. And that seemed to resonate. But it was a lovely event. It was just really a pleasure to be in front of our young women leaders of the future. With respect to my work on the Central Middle School Building Committee, we do have, we're coming up on another, another meeting with Planning and Zoning on April 23rd. We have a Perimeters, Perimeter Neighbors Meeting scheduled for April 24th. And then we have a community forum for the broader community scheduled for May 1st. So, that's where we're going to just continue to show the community where we are with the plans for the rebuild of Central Middle School and, you know, address any concerns, especially with the construction phases, because we will be constructing the new school while the existing school remains open. What else? Oh, I was able to speak with my colleagues about some of the attributes we're looking for, for candidates for the Fair Rent Commission. So, in addition to the prescription of having tenants and landlords, we're also looking for people with real estate experience, especially experience with rentals, as well as legal experience. We have had some candidates submit their nomination forms to date. We're going to be interviewing some today, as a matter of fact. But we still have, you know, plenty of openings and opportunity for people that might be interested in serving on this commission. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Lauren. Good morning, Janet.
Good morning, and thank you. And I will echo my colleagues' report about Women in Government on Sunday. Oh, my gosh, the energy in Town Hall was incredible. If that's any indication, our future is in good hands. Much is going on. On Wednesday, April 17th, at 11 o'clock, the Retired Men's Association will be inviting Beth Evans, who is the Director of Environmental Affairs for the Town of Greenwich, as well as my co-chair for the Greenwich Sustainability Committee. She will be the featured speaker. And then on Wednesday, April 24th, also a lot is going on. The League of Women Voters will be hosting its Harvard case study focusing on the Equal Rights Amendment. If the past is predictive, it's not just going to be educational. It'll be entertaining. There will be a lot of high school students who will be impressing us with their formidable understanding of how government and history has worked. And then I have also a brief update from the Old Greenwich School Building Committee, which has just completed the design development phase of the pre-construction process and is moving into construction documents, hoping to complete construction documents this summer. The Building Committee is aiming to submit its final site plan to Planning and Zoning in May. The project team is working through a few final items to be responsive to planning and zoning. I think one will recall that the project does have municipal improvement status from both Planning and Zoning and the RTM. The Building Committee and Old Greenwich School community are thrilled that the BET has included $43 million in construction funding in the fiscal year 2024-25 budget, as requested by the Board of Education and the first selectman. If the RTM approves this funding, the Building Committee will be in a position to meet the June 30th deadline to submit its application to the state and remain on track to start construction in summer 2025. The Building Committee does expect to need to come back to the BET for an interim appropriation later this year to ensure that the town has an appropriate construction contingency for the project, as requested by the Building Committee and the Board of Education. And finally, the Building Committee will be hosting a forum for the RTM members on Wednesday, May 1st, at 6:00 PM. This will be a great opportunity for RTM members to hear directly from the project team and tour the Old Greenwich School Building in advance of considering construction funding during the RTM's May budget hearings. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Okay, going on to old business, we have three items, all with the same presenter, Deputy Chief Craig Gray. And I think the first up is the request for an amendment to schedule 2A, the 30-minute parking for three spaces over on Delavan Avenue. So, we'll handle that one first. All yours, chief.
Thank you, Fred, for me. And for the record, I'm Deputy Chief Craig Gray, Director of Parking Services. This is the second read. Parking services did not receive, in the interviewing time, we did not receive any comments directly to Parking Services. I understand there was one or two that came through. Not came directly to us, but some came through the office.
I don't believe any Greenwich residents. There may have been one from out of town, out of state, but not.
But to add to that package, what we did do was, one of those questions that came forward was, what is the current signage? There was no actual photos of it. So, we just amended it to add the photos of each location. So, there's, other than that, there's nothing.
Thank you, chief. And again, just briefly, for somebody who may not be aware, this is being done because?
So, this is, you know, on the second read, I would just say again, what we found was, responding to complaints in the area about not enforcing the signs, we found out there was actually, at the town ordinance was not following the signs. So, it's basically housekeeping, right? So, the complaints weren't, changed the ordinance. We're just making sure that it is enforced.
Thank you. That's what I was getting at. So, thank you for explaining it. It's not a major change here. This is just lining things up. And again, we heard nothing from Greenwich residents at all. So, any? Okay, good thing. Well, I guess we can entertain a motion on this one? Yes, sir.
I'm Al Shahidi.
Can you please speak in the microphone there?
Did you sign up to speak on this?
Well, we're going to go, we'll go over that. Good to see you.
Just identify yourself first.
Yeah, sure. I'm Al Shahidi. I'm resident of Byram. I'm also the treasurer of the BNA. I'm other, I'm not the parking guy into the BNA, but they could be here today, so I happen to be free. We have no sustained comments on BNA, the Byram County Association. Sorry, I take that for granted. I'm sure everybody's familiar with it. We have no sustained comments, and we appreciate the attention to try and keep parking in Byram. For people who are patronizing Byram, let's hope that they will cross it over and try to avoid parking in the system. Just two comments, a process one in the future as you're considering things like this.
Could you try and put the microphones on?
Sorry.
In the future, we'd appreciate it if you could reach out to the BNA. I'd be happy to take your contact and, you know, give us, give you our contact information. We are the community organization for all of Byram. We try and be a good partner with town agencies, bring you input, help you explain things to the community, and just to make sure that you're getting as broad a community input as possible. The second comment is a more longer-term one. There are some concerns that we've heard back that by more appropriately enforcing the commercial area, there is a potential that some of the folks that are trying to inappropriately take advantage of our parking are going to move elsewhere in Byram and not go away. So, thinking like the Byram Park, Byram Library Parking Lot, a little further down South Water Street, some of the residential streets between South Water and Mead. So, we'd love to have a conversation with you about just how to do a little bit of a broader study to figure out if there is a larger problem and how we might be able to address that. So, love to chat after the meeting. That's just input from the BNA. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Appreciate it.
Just quickly, for the record, I'll respond to that. I appreciate the input. Obviously, it doesn't directly relate to the ordinance as written, but always, input from the community is important to us. The community stakeholders, these different groups that are out there, would certainly love to speak to you about that. I believe that right now, there is a traffic, pedestrian study that's going on that's been going through different locations, seeking input from the community. So, there are ongoing efforts taking place by the Town of Greenwich Police Department, Traffic Engineering, that covers some of that parking-related incidents. So, that's an opportunity for you to actually join in the conversation. We also have, at the Police Department, a CAP program, I won't take too much more time. A CAP program, right, that's a community and the police partnership. You know, if you participate in that, there's an opportunity, again, for stakeholders, the average citizen, that kind of thing, to engage in a regular conversation with our Community Impact Section. And so, that's another avenue for you. Okay?
Okay, thank you, chief. And going on to the second one, is a request for amendment to schedule.
Is there a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we have to vote on that. Sorry. Is there? Yes. Al threw me off on that one.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the request for amendment to schedule Roman numeral 2A, 30-minute parking.
Janet Stone McWiggin, I second.
All is in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you. And now going on to the second one, which is a request for an amendment to schedule three, one-hour parking. DC Gray is again here, and this is on the North and South street side of the street of Mill?
Which one is this one?
Mill.
Veterans Way? Mill?
Yeah, that's in that third one. Yeah, this is Mill.
Okay, Mill. No change.
No change. I have not heard a word. Lauren, have you heard any?
No.
Okay, so we can, comment there. Okay, so I guess we can entertain a motion on that one.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the request for amendment to schedule Roman numeral 3, one-hour parking.
Janet Stone McWiggin, I second.
All is in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you. And finally, going on to number three, which is a request to amendment Schedule 4, two-hour parking, and this is over on Veterans Way. And I have not heard anything.
No change.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the request for amendment to schedule Roman numeral 4, two-hour parking.
Janet Stone McWiggin, I second.
All is in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWiggin, yes.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you. And I'll be back soon.
Okay, going on to new business, we have, first up is a request for nighttime construction work on Greenwich Avenue for the Eversource Electric Project. Andrew Vento of Penna Constructions here. Oh, he's right in front of me. I've been looking at you. Good morning, Andrew.
Good morning. We. Yes, Andrew Vento, AJ Penna Construction. We've put in for a request for nighttime closure on Greenwich Avenue for an improvement installation of electrical vaults for Eversource Electric. Three locations on Greenwich Avenue. I believe those maps have been sent over to the board for review.
Okay, and timeline, Andrew?
We're looking at late spring into summer of this year.
Okay, hours of operation?
Primarily nighttime. They will be intermittent enclosures, again, according to how I've depicted them on the maps for each location.
Okay, and just to point a clarification, because an ongoing project right now presently, you have an agreement with a private property owner to store equipment. And usually on Thursday nights, the heavy equipment gets dropped there at 2:30, 3:00 in the morning. So, we've been getting lots of complaints about that. And so, I reached out to the Board of Ed to see if they could have some room there, which would give those people a break. They did not. They did look at it, and we thanked them for considering it. Are we going to be looking at that here, too? Because I'm going to have a meeting this afternoon with somebody from your company to see if we can give these people a break there, because there's some young kids there, babies are waking up 2:30, 3:00 in the morning, and it's a neighborhood. So, I know there's no good time to do this. There's no perfect solution, I think, but we have, we owe it to the residents to try our best to find spots where it's just not going to be keeping them up at night. So, in this particular project, are we going to be looking at that again?
We don't envision using that spot for this project.
Okay. Any other spots where this may, we may run into an issue with residents?
I don't believe so. I'm, being from northern part of Connecticut, I am not too familiar with Greenwich. But we don't really envision using a storage yard for this project. Anything that we do bring onto the site, we will bring from our facility, from our headquarters in New Canaan, every night, on a nightly basis. Whether it be, whether it be the heavy equipment, any kind of concrete structures or vaults, again, that'll all be brought in on a nightly basis, where we will not be using a yard adjacent to the project.
Okay, and we get along very well with our friends in New Canaan. I'm sure they wouldn't mind having storing that stuff over there on Old Track Road in New Canaan. But anyway, I appreciate that. And I do have, as I said, a call with John later today about some options that we could look at to give the people a little bit of a break. But, but thank you. If anything does change there, any more information comes to you, if you could just let us know, that'd be great.
By all means.
Thank you, Andrew. Appreciate it. Okay.
Well, can we do the same? What is, what's the window that we're talking about? From, do we think it's three months, four months?
Into the summer. So, when you define that, from April into the summer, early summer, midsummer?
I say, at the earliest, probably from late May, early June. And again, not consist, not on a consistent basis, probably through August. Through August. But again, not on a nightly, consistent basis. We would go, we would mobilize to one location, install one structure, one vault, and there may be, there may be a gap in between from where we go to the next location. And then at the next location, we might be there for another week or two.
So, it's not consistent throughout that time period?
It's not consistent.
It's three, like, tranches lasting about two weeks.
Right. So, so for the three locations that we've submitted for, it would be a week or two for each location.
So, can we do the same thing that we did for Aquarian? Can we, can we just say that we'll, that we will give?
Yeah, in other words, can you circle back with us every, you know, few weeks or every month? In this case, probably a month.
Yeah.
Just to let us know how it's going, because we, in the interim, we get comments from people, concerns. And I think because there's not that much information on this, if you can gather it for the next meeting, because questions are going to come. And again, we know the work has to be done. We support it getting done. It needs to be done. It will get done. But anything we can do to mitigate the disruptions to, and sometimes there's going to be some, but anything we could do to mitigate it would be helpful. I mean, I've, I've been in neighborhoods where this work's going on. I get it. The fact I don't sleep helped me, because it does bother me. But other people do sleep, and it's, and it becomes an issue. So, yeah, anything, any information you can give us would be great. And then, as Janet said, in the past, we just asked that the utility come back to us, or the company come back to us, in this case, probably every month, just to give us an update on where you are, and so we can get, dispense that information out to the, to the community.
Right. So, just to be clear, we'll date, we'll date this for one month, not, not restricting the project to one month, but saying, come back after one month. And if there's any issues, we, that's our opportunity to work them out.
Don't foresee any problem with that.
Exactly. Okay.
Thank you, Andrew.
Okay, thank you.
We'll see you in a few weeks. Thank you. We're going to have a signup list for that, because for the, that's the reason why we're going to be talking about this, is, you know, can't have a free-for-all for these meetings where people are constantly commenting on every single issue. And I'm not talking to you, but I'm just saying, you know, you know, that becomes chaotic. So, we want to get back to what we were doing early on. So, we're going to discuss that openly in a bit. So, so. It's a, Peter, Peter, this is the reason why, we can't have a meeting run like that. So, again, which if you can go identify, identify yourself and ask a question. But this is why we have to have a signup seat, because this gets chaotic. And I'm sorry, it's not going to happen every single meeting. It's going to end. So, if you can go identify yourself, Peter, and ask your question. Yeah, because you asked it already, and we want to make sure it's on the record. Thank you. Thank you. I wanted to make sure you get your steps in, too. Get your steps in.
Peter Alexander, lifelong Greenwich resident, and wondering why Aquarian and Eversource are asking for these large disruptive projects.
Thank you. Thank you.
Bob Handler, I'm the project manager for Eversource for these projects. Oh, is this off? Okay, Bob Handler, Eversource. Our first part of expanding our facilities and/or updating and replacing existing facilities is expanding the civil structure, which is the pipe and structures that are underground that accommodate our new wiring, increased capacity, and just increasing reliability with additional circuits. So, the point of this project is for future expansion, reliability, and growth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you for the question. Thank you. Okay, next up is a discussion of Greenwich communities' roles in compliance with 830G, which is a huge issue here in town and in the state of Connecticut, probably the biggest issue we all face in, get, Andrew, in all 169 municipalities. So, Sam and Tony are here to discuss. So, Sam Romeo, Anthony Johnson.
Yeah, I just want to thank the Board of Selectmen for entertaining this. We're concerned, Greenwich communities concerned about what's happening on a state level. And every municipality in the state of Connecticut is at risk. 830G was probably a well-intended legislative process. However, I don't believe it was thoroughly thought out. There are a number of things in it that I would change if I had the ability to do so. But while we're here, we're here to try to help the town of Greenwich, along with maybe set the lead for other municipalities to do the same. I remember growing up here in Greenwich, actually, growing up in Greenwich. And I went to bed one night, and I woke up in Greenwich. I don't know what happened. Went from Greenwich to Greenwich. What I'm afraid is happening here now with 830G, I'm going to bed in Greenwich, and I'm going to wake up in Manhattan with all of the four and five and six-story buildings that are being proposed under 830G. Now, at best, we have a process that Planning and Zoning has gone through with the Affordable Trust Fund. But at best, all they can do is reduce the number of units and size of a project. It can't stop the major developments that are plaguing our town. We, on the other hand, have a solution, and we believe that we can achieve that moratorium that everybody keeps talking about. When a developer comes in and does a project and wants to build a number of units, let's do some simple mathematics. Say Greenwich is required under the 10% law for affordable housing, 830G, has to build 1,000 units. And a developer comes in and says, okay, great. We're going to build 100 units, and we're going to get it to town, 30 of those units, 30%, to put to the affordability process. And we'll take the 30, and we'll take it from the 1,000. And now, gee, we only have to build 970. Well, not so. That 970, we take the 30, we come down to 970, but we just added 70 market rate units to the project. So, now we add the 70 to the 940 or 970, and we're up to 1040. So, every time a developer comes in with affordable housing project, that number changes. We're like on a hamster, on a wheel, chasing our tails, and we're never going to, never going to accomplish yet. But the thinking of Greenwich communities is that when we build units, 100% of our units are affordable. Not only that, we get a bonus, because there's U points, Housing Affordable Points, that the town has to attain 500 points in order to ask for a moratorium. When we build units, not only we get the 10%, to the, the 100%, 100% of our units to the 10%, we also get U points, anywhere from 1 and 1/2, 2, to 2 and 1/2 points for every unit that we build. So, presently, we have projects in our system that we want to build that we can give the town over 500 U points, well above what they already need. So, you know, based on, you know, our calculations, we can get the town that affordability or that moratorium to give us the ability to stop this madness, stop the five and six-story constructions that are happening around town. Right now, I just a rough number count, I believe there's like 781 units proposed here in the Town of Greenwich that's presently going before the Board of, the Planning and Zoning Commission. And, you know, what comes, what comes with all of this construction is our infrastructure. Our infrastructure is going to need some serious upgrading, the sewer plant, our schools, our roads, water, electric that was just here. So, it's. So it's, it's very important that people get behind Greenwich Communities and listen to us and, and hear the warning that we're giving you, that we, we, as Greenwich Communities can help stop this madness that's been set upon us. I don't have Tony talk in on some of the other things about finances and stuff, what we need to, to put the brakes on this. We can do it.
Thank you. Thank you, Sam. Good morning, Tony.
Hey, good morning. I'm Anthony Johnson, Executive Director of Greenwich Communities. Fred, Sam is exactly right, we can be helpful in trying to obtain a moratorium. A lot of us believe that 830G is new to us. 830G has been on the state's books for over 30 years. The first 30 years, there were four or five applications that existed with a handful of units. Matter of fact, one of the approvals that did occur never got developed. Obviously, over the last few years, there are nine, 10, 11 developments that have been approved that are requiring tons of units to the town. And I, I think what we would like to direct here and, and make you aware of is even as these units are being developed, don't think that any place in town is safe, right? If you're across the post road and you never get a moratorium or you never comply with the law in terms of the 10% affordability, they're going to cross the road. What stops them from, you know, trying to do what they did near the high school or in the back country, mid-country, there's nothing to actually stop them from doing it. And so, you know, we don't want to see that happen, and we believe that we can actually assist in that development. We are able to get state funding, all of our developments are, that we build, remain affordable forever, not, they don't come off the rolls. As you can see, you have developments that recently have come off the rolls, the tax rolls as being set aside units. They go to market. The old Putnam Green, for example, I mean, the number of units that have come off down there and the rent increases that have occurred over the last, you know, eight years have been substantial. We believe that we can help and we would like to help. And you already have the tools. You have a planned conservation development that calls for the Housing Authority to be the lead in creating affordable housing. We're trying to do that, we want to do that. That plan also speaks to using land that's either owned by the Housing Authority or land that's owned by the town to help you achieve that. And we would like for, you know, all of us to reconsider the information that's out there. That's also true about your own Affordable Housing Trust Fund Plan or Affordable Housing Plan that's on the books as well, that also calls for the Housing Authority to be the lead in creating affordable housing. And we would like to do that. And so we believe we can help. There's a little over 500 points that are needed to get a moratorium. We have projects that, as you know, we have on the books, we just got to get them moving. We have approval for, from RTM on, or not RTM, but Planning and Zoning on a couple of them. And we're going to bid on those and we're ready to continue to do that with your assistance.
I want to thank you both because this law, which came on the books in 1991, has been a colossal failure. It's, there's 169 municipalities, only 28 have got to 10%, and most of them are cities. It's failed. And this isn't, 830G is not, is the tip of it. There's still bills every year, and even this year as we speak, that would be worse, our 830G on steroids. I mean, the, the fair share bill would probably go up to about 19% requirement. We'll all be dead by the time we get that. So it would fundamentally change the character of all towns, not just Greenwich. And as, again, I keep saying, as the governor of the state of Connecticut says, "Greenwich is doing a good job, they're doing a good job, let them do it locally." They should, we, we can be a model for this, and I support what you're doing to get us to that 10%, to get them off our backs so that a developer can't circumvent local zoning. Local zoning, local control of zoning is fundamental to every town and municipality in America. To take that away from people who are serving in Hartford, who, and, and certain mayors who have made comments, who I've called them out on, who have never even been to Greenwich, they, this one-size-fits-all will never work, ever. So just to piggyback on what Sam and Tony said, just four years ago, we were at 5.2%, which was probably doubled, it's over double what our neighbors, except for the ones that are cities. We're now up to 5.8. And what you just heard from Sam and Tony is the things that they have planned, like Quarry Knoll, right, redoing that, it would be so nice. You've done at Armstrong Court, which is near and dear to my, my heart, is amazing, right? And I know Angelo's here, it's, right, the courts, did you ever think the courts would be that beautiful, right? No. And so those are all affordable because this law, I could go on for an hour, but if you didn't put $25,000 into a unit since 1991, even if the unit's affordable, it doesn't count. So all of those that they've redone at Armstrong, Armstrong Court are now going to be counted. And when, and 2/3 of Quarry Knolls is now, will be counted when that's done. And the unit you're adding over at McKinney Terrace, that's going to get us close to 7%, right, correct? So I mean, that's huge, that is huge. So I think you are the answer to this, and I fully support what you're doing and I, I hope that people realize that, you know, when you do an 830G application, it makes it worse for us because only 20% is going to, as you said, it's like a dog chasing its tail. So again, I, I totally support what you're doing. It's a, it's an ongoing issue. We're trying to show the state that we're not only going to get to that 10%, but we're doing it in a way that makes those residents very proud to live there, but we have to keep showing them that we're doing that. And again, you have a governor that's supporting us right now with that. That's not the case in a legislature with a, a certain wing of the legislature. So I think we have to be very cognizant of that as we go forward.
What I'd like to add too about 830G, 830G is not going to go away, and it's, it's only getting worse. I've been attending hearings and speaking around the state, there are new proposals to even make 830G even more detriment to municipalities than, than it's currently, in its current form. So it's very important. Look, the Greenwich Communities is not the enemy here. We're here to be a partner with the community. I think that we're, we're going to go in the right direction. We don't want to commit to somebody's neighborhood and say, "Oh, we're going to build affordable housing and destroy it." If anybody has seen the quality of the work that we have been doing over the last several years, you know that we're not going to put a detriment to anybody's community. We want to partner with, with the neighborhoods. We don't want to be looked at as, "Well, you're going to bring down the, the value of our properties." No, we want to raise the value of your properties. And we have properties practically all over town. You probably don't even know where we are. We're in Old Greenwich, we're in Riverside, no, I'm sorry, not Old Greenwich, Riverside, Central Greenwich, Cos Cob. We're spread out among the town, Central Greenwich. We're not just into the western part of town as some people perceive we are, we're not. We're spread out, we have some beautiful property right on Strickland, not Strickland, on Strickland Road, also Uncross Lane, right across from the Lachlan Park. You don't know we're there, but we're there. And when we take over a property, we enhance it, we don't devalue it. And in the P O D C, it does state that the Greenwich Communities should use its underutilized properties, so if we have property that's under, underused, we should be redeveloping them. And we're doing that. And, and also with the town, if the town has unused property that it's not using, they should consider working in a partnership with Greenwich Communities to enhance them. Underutilized property is the key here. We can get to that 10% and we can probably get to the U points faster and get that, that moratorium a lot faster than what we're doing, anything else.
And a moratorium would be four years. So it gives you a little bit of time to, for more years without the threat over our heads to get to that 10%.
And we give the, the power back to planning and zoning to stop these high rises. Because the one that's really concerning me the most right now, well, actually two, is the one on Benedict Place, 120 units running parallel with Greenwich Avenue and two six-story buildings on, on the end of Mason Street where the old Honda dealership was. That is going to be a nightmare. The, the traffic down there is murder coming down from Davis Avenue and Bruce Park Avenue now. Can you imagine two six-story buildings or five-story buildings on the end of, of Mason Street? No.
Okay, Lauren and Janet, would you like to say?
I just had one last comment.
Sure.
Be aware as well that developers who are coming to town now and they may not even have their financing line up, but they understand that there's a movement where the Housing Authority, Greenwich Communities, and others are trying to fight the 830G law. So they're asking for approvals now and even though they're not looking to build, they just want to get in under the radar, under, under the wire before something happens. So just be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Jim Bootell, Housing Commissioner?
Yes, I'm actually the Vice Chairman of Greenwich Communities. I actually, since this is an information session to a degree, I have one question that I'm not sure I know the answer to. You mentioned the moratorium would be four years, and maybe Sam could go into it, or Tony, there's a point scoring system. I'm wondering where we are, you mentioned 500 points, where are we? When did it start? And where, how are we going to get to the 500 exactly? I know we have a number of projects, I assume the improvements we made to Armstrong Court count towards that 500. So we're always focusing on this 10%. Let's talk about how close are we to getting to 500 and how do we get there? And if it's a four-year moratorium, what does that do to the existing projects that are out there? Or is it only going to stop new proposals?
Thank you. I don't, where are, as far as the points go?
You actually need a little over 1,000 points. The town has right over 550 equivalency points because of existing units. Ours, for the most part, are the majority of that, that number. We're saying, for example, that if we were to develop, just to give you an example, the Strickland parking lot, right? These are two bedroom units, that's 72 housing equivalency points, right there, 72. So if we're doing this, plus we're doing McKinney, and, sorry? 104.
For the 52.
And, yeah, so those 52 units, we're also looking at a senior building for Armstrong Court, another unit. So we're there, right? It's just a matter of, I'm not going to go through the calculations today because it depends on the size of the bedrooms and that kind of thing to determine what your total points are per, per development.
And when you get to Quarry Knoll, that's really going to be.
That's the biggie.
That's the big one, that's 2/3. Yeah, that, that pushes us over. And if you've been to Quarry Knoll, right, 2/3 of it needs to be replaced. And so I know I spoke to some people in the Greenwich neighborhood, Central Greenwich, and even in Millbrook, very supportive of that effort. They're very supportive of it. So you have really, there's no, I don't think any, there's any pushback here. So, you know, anything we can do to support you in getting approvals for this to move us forward because again, that will get us over it. And then I know you have some other ideas too, but when I, some, I've met with people about this, the Strickland, and they're, it's pretty clear to me that not everybody understands this because they're thinking it's, you know, it's 20%, you know, 830G and, you know, they don't understand that every single neighborhood is vulnerable until we get to that 10%. And as you said, it's not going anywhere. There are several bills up there again in Hartford, coming from the same usual suspects introducing these bills. They've said they're going to continue to do them every year, and as long as their, their folks in those districts keep re-electing them, they're going to keep putting them up there. But we do have a governor who's supporting us, who's seen firsthand what we're doing here. And so we have a good story to tell, and I think Greenwich could be a leader in this. So I support what you're doing again and.
And you ask, "Why aren't we moving forward?" Well, there's one reason why we're not moving forward. It's called financing, money. We can get this done, if we had the financing, we can get this done rapidly. We, we can run more than one project at a time, given the, the finances. And I've been talking with members of the BET, and I have to say, they are really receptive for what we're doing and trying to save the town from this attack.
Do you want to briefly, so people don't get confused, when you hear BET, they're going to say, "Oh my God, there goes the taxes," and.
No.
Do you want to explain to them exactly how this financing would work and how it would not come out of the taxpayer's pocket?
Well, it would be a bond, just like a sewer bond. When, when your sewer district, the beneficiaries of that project pay back the bond and interest to the town. So when they float the bond, it's not taxpayers' money, it's money being loaned out as a bond or being a, like a buying a stock and you're.
And what's going to pay that debt? What revenue?
And our rents would pay the debt. So if we were given a bond by the town, we would pay the, the bond back every year. So no tax increase.
Just so, and then some people are going to dive down on that, and they should. If there's a way to show what those possible rents would be and what the financing would be.
Yeah, we have to do that.
The calculations.
Yeah, we have to do those calculations.
We want to make sure what we say is actually going to come to fruition. So I think the idea is perfect, but I think when we, once we line that up with the actual statistics that we think, I think it's, it's going to be much easier to.
Every project that we do, we have to perform on and show what the payback is and the length of it. And we, we work with, with the bonding companies, we work with tax credits. So we're out there constantly working. We're always constantly thinking outside the box, and we got to where we are today by thinking outside the box, and we plan to get a lot further with the support of the town.
And I would suggest, and thank you, there are going to be, there's going to be elections this year, and not to demagogue the issue, but when you have candidates running for the state office, this is the number one issue, and they should be talking about it. I know Senator Fazio talks about it all the time, but I want to see all of our representatives front and center talking about it, but not demagoguing it, not saying, "Oh, it's us against them," talking about what we're doing, right? Writing a nice op-ed, Greenwich is really leading the way on this stuff, and Greenwich is showing how we can get it done without Hartford interference. I think that, so when you, you know, we always get it when we're running for office, right? People are going to, that's the time to ask the questions, is when they're running for office. Ask them, is this your, what's your number one issue? What's your number two issue? What's your number three? This should be number one, two, and three. That's how big this is. And I want to, I, you know, I'm going to be, as a resident, I'm a taxpayer and a resident, I'm going to be asking all four of them, the senator and the three reps, you know, you know, "How do you plan to do, if, if reelected, what's your game plan?" Again, I know the senator's done some, some, put some bills in, but I want to make sure that people are engaged here and just ask it, because we need help, we need help.
And I want to add that the units that we're building, we're not bringing people in from other areas. Greenwich residents get first choice on whatever we're building. And, and it's, it's for our kids, it's for aunts, uncles, cousins, family members that are, that are either.
Elderly.
Gotten older, want to downsize, but these units are for Greenwich residents that are already here. It's not like you're bringing strangers into our community. And I want to provide our seniors, actually, the best quality of life they can possibly have because they helped build this town, and they want to stay in this town, they want to pass on and, and, and live out their lives here, and we hope that we can do that for them.
I have, I guess, a question and a statement. So can you describe, Sam, how you're working with the Affordable Housing Trust?
Well, I'm, I'm a, an ex-official member, and we listen in, I sit in, we haven't brought any projects to them because I think that we can do what we do without having to go to the Housing Trust Fund for money. I mean, if, if they want to give us an outright grant, we can take grant, but we, they give out loans, they don't give out grants. And we can get a loan or get tax credits, you know, a lot cheaper than they can give us the money.
Got it, thank you. And then my statement, the whole thing about something having to have been improved in the last 30 years, that's, that sticks in my craw because I live in, I guess, what would be considered an unaffordable house that was built in 1984, and I, my bathrooms could use some upgrading, so I, I don't get the date thing, really.
I, I don't know what you mean about.
Why can we not consider something affordable because it was built or, built 30 years?
Oh, prior, prior older.
But something could be unaffordable that was built, you know, 30 years, and they're fine.
Can I clarify?
Yeah, I can say it too, but go ahead.
Well, I'm hardly, I'm hardly the 830G expert, but it does qualify, it doesn't qualify for the moratorium. That's the difference, that's the date.
It has to be, your, your property would have to be. It has to be, your property would have to be restricted for 40 years in order to be able to be counted. So without getting a 40-year restriction on the unit, or accessory unit, or as we used to call them, in-law apartments, don't count towards anything unless it has a restriction on it.
Yeah, I'm not talking about the restriction. I'm talking about improvements.
So the $25,000...
Yeah, but if you put $25,000 into it and you also add the restriction, then you can count it.
But, but the, the date, the requirement for the improvement isn't a requirement for the unit to be counted as affordable. It is counted as affordable, it simply isn't counted towards the moratorium in the point system.
Right, but that, and that's the whole thing, is if it's not counted, then it's not helping us.
Right, but I think people, I think people misunderstood. I think they heard you say that units that haven't been improved don't count towards our affordable units, and they do.
Yeah, but again, but we don't want to confuse people. It's not counted in where it counts, right? It's, we need it to be counted by the state, otherwise we're all vulnerable. So unless it's going to be counted by the state, to me, it's not counted.
Let's make it a little simpler. If you have a three-family house...
It is confusing.
And you put $25,000 in each unit, okay? And you're looking to get it to be counted. Unless you do the $25,000 and put the restriction on it for the 40-year moratorium, it counts for nothing. You have to be part of that restriction.
In both the 10% and the moratorium? Because Janet, that, I didn't understand, so if that's correct, thank you for clarifying for me, that it's just the moratorium, not the actual 10% 830G?
Right.
Thank you.
Any other...
It still bothers me, but thank you.
The law really, you would hope that would have been written better. It's on the books, and there's no signs of them approving the law. But we can keep, we don't stop trying. And certainly, we don't stop questioning and advocating to our elected officials on the state level. And this was something we worked on years ago. And you're right, 10, 15 years ago, when I was in the legislature, we were working on 830G. But it wasn't as prevalent in the news. It wasn't as front and center because we didn't have that many applications. We foresaw this coming, at some point, the possibility. And so we would go before the Housing Committee. And unfortunately, they're all good guys and women on that, on that committee. But they were, they were concentrated in certain areas of the state where they were very much against places like Fairfield County. So if you were lucky enough to get a public hearing, which is the first step in getting a bill passed, that's as far as you went. And usually you got it if you got along with them. But they, you were, you get lots of smiles and head shakes. But at the end of the day, there was no affirmative vote coming out of the committee. And they looked at it as, well, those towns in Fairfield County are just trying to pull one on us. They're just trying to get around this law. And again, most of them had never even been to any of the towns in Fairfield County. So it's an ongoing thing. But we have to continue to put the best, you know, face forward and be the face of really good projects that are making people very, very proud to live in them. So we can be the model, but we don't want to be negative, right, in the press towards it. We want to just show them, hey, we're actually doing this thanks to Greenwich Communities and thanks to all the people that are on the board, the commissioners here. So your work is greatly appreciated, and we couldn't do it without you. The team at Greenwich Communities, and Terry and everybody else here. You are helping us a lot.
What I want to say is that the biggest single threat to Greenwich right now is 830G. And again, like I say, I'm going to bed at night in Greenwich. I don't want to wake up in Manhattan. So we want to do what's right for all of us. So let's, you know, get on board, and we can stop this madness, really, again.
Thank you. And we continue good fortunes with all your projects there and there. You know, just if you don't believe us, just go buy the projects, look at what's being done there. It's amazing. But thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, last item up is a discussion of the Board of Selectmen's public comment policy. And I spoke with the town attorneys, and we've looked at this issue. And a couple of years, when we first got in office, we actually had a sign-up sheet for people who want to talk, just to keep some order. Because again, as you saw before, if you're running a meeting and you want to talk to somebody, you really have to go through the chair, right, whoever the chair is at that meeting. Otherwise, you're going to have people back and forth, back and forth. And I've seen meetings that were poorly run, and that's, it's not a good scene. And nothing productive gets done. So I think we're, I favor, personally favor going back to the sign-up. So if you want to speak on something, you have to sign up ahead of time because otherwise, it's a free-for-all. And some, it's an invitation for somebody, if they want to do that, to monopolize the time and, you know, get the podium. And, you know, we've seen some statements made that were not even close to being true. But yet, we have to sit through them, and it becomes a game, a joke. And so I don't want to waste anybody's time. People are working during the day. So, you know, if you're not, and this is what you do, that's great. We want to hear feedback. We want it done in an orderly fashion. So there is a bill in Hartford about this, but it has not been voted on yet or even, don't even know if it's going to get passed. But whatever it is, we still will retain some control over the policy of how we want to run meetings. So I just want to let you know, I'm personally in favor. I don't want to see chaos at meetings. And we've seen certainly in other towns where they've even had fistfights a couple of years ago, yeah. And our meetings are very civil. But there's a couple of times where, you know, you could see somebody maybe pushing their limits a little bit. And we want to make sure that it's, you know, every single issue doesn't have to be spoken on, especially when you've heard the same thing mentioned before, right? We always tell people, if you haven't, if you've heard this before, please refrain. If it's something new, you know, identify yourself. But I think, I'll let my colleagues talk and their opinions on it. We're doing this publicly. We haven't done this privately because we want to make sure people know that it's a transparent conversation. But I would personally favor a sign-up sheet so we know who's going to speak ahead of time. And we could always amend something by a vote. But certainly, I think we need to have some balance and order. Not a huge issue, but we want to make sure we stay on top of it.
And is the intent, the sign-up would be on agenda items?
Yes.
As you know, I'm a big advocate for public engagement, but I'm also a rule follower. And I do think that as long as the rules are clear to everyone, that they work, you know, in the interest of everyone. And as I've said, you know, as long as our legal department knows that we are complying with FOIA, the Freedom of Information Act, I'm perfectly happy to establish some rules.
Thank you, yes. And they're very clear. It has, the rules have to apply to everybody fairly. So it's just, you can't play favorites. If you don't, if one person comes and they're, you're a bad neighbor and they're there to give you a hard time, they still have the rights, as everybody else does. So it's got to be equally applied. Again, we love, we like the fact, this is a, these are, as the law right now stands, the town attorney said, these are not public hearings. So you're not allowed, you're not entitled to speak. These are public meetings. But we like having the public feedback. We just want to make sure that, you know, it stays, you know, civil and it also stays on point. And that, you know, meetings, again, people work during the day. They take time to come here for these meetings. So we want to make sure that they're not unnecessarily prolonged because somebody wants to talk on every single item. So that's where we're coming from with this. And we're, we'll continue to speak with the town attorney and get something, and something public. But again, people would be welcome to speak. We just want to make sure that they sign up, identify yourself. And we, most boards and commissions and committees do put limits on that. You don't have to. We think it's a good idea to put, you know, a two-minute limit on it. And you can certainly, questions back and forth that can prolong that a little bit. But to have somebody up there for 20 minutes is probably not a good use of time, of everybody's time there. So we've had lots of meetings where we've run up against, like today, executive committee meeting. And so we've been late a couple of times. And sometimes, if you look at the tapes, it's for something that's been discussed 15 times already. So, you know, we try to be mindful of those people who are waiting to be interviewed by us or updated on a legal matter. Or you have other things to do. You have to get back to work, right? So anyway, you don't want to waste any time. So that's the reason why we wanted to have that discussion and get that out there.
I would like a three-minute limit, but whether it's two or three, right, it's, it's plenty, plenty of time. That's, that's two pages of double space, but who's counting?
Yeah, exactly. All right, thank you. All right, all right, so... Yeah, you could just come up. Yeah, absolutely. Just come up and identify yourself. Angelo will be our timer.
My name is Ferris. I've been living at 83 Strickland Road since, for about 36 years. Susan Ferris, 83B Strickland Road for about 35 years. And I've listened to today's conversation. I've been listening to the conversations along the way. And what seems to me that comes up all the time is this notion of a lot of disinformation. So whether it's in writing, I would like to know where everybody's coming from, you principals regarding what are, how am I disinformed? Okay, what is the misinformation? Tony today said he's, we have to reconsider all the information that's out there. I'd like to understand if there's something I don't understand. I know the project's design hasn't changed in the last bunch of months. I still have issues with the project. I think that one of the main issues that we don't seem to talk about, but we did at the beginning because we heard Sam say that there's not a flooding issue down there. I and my colleagues that are here, my neighbors that are here today, suffered through the latest floods about three weeks ago. So what's the misinformation, if someone can help me out on that? I will submit something formally through the proper format. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Susan, thank you. Is there any specific thing of misinformation, because I'm not following? I didn't say anything about... Oh.
We just, we just changed topics. We're talking about our public comment policy. And then we just shifted back to the Strickland.
I know that. I get that. But I, and you mentioned, it's not, that's why we're going to get this public comment thing. But today, it's not there, so we were going to allow comment today on that. But I just don't know what you meant by misinformation, because I don't think I mentioned misinformation. There is a lot of misinformation, a lot of things. I would definitely circle back with them right after this meeting and ask, get, put things in writing. I think you're very smart to do that. They're very open with stuff like that, so... Yeah, okay. So we'll, yeah, so we'll, they're here now, and you could certainly do that. Because I think being transparent, getting things in writing is always a good thing.
Was there the community forum on the project?
No, that was...
Because I know it was postponed, but I was out of town, so I wasn't sure.
When is the, well, I hate to do the back and forth like this, but when is the next...
There's no date yet.
No date yet, okay. We're working on that. Okay, thank you.
A windstorm and weather canceled two of them.
Yes, thank you.
Hello, I'm Ann Tobacco. I live at 83 Strickland Road A. So Susan is my neighbor. My question was, when are we having that rescheduled public hearing? So we do not have a date?
No, because as you know, the first time we were all set to go, we had a power outage here.
I know, I know. I came to that meeting.
Ken, do we have any, any... Yes, please. I'd like to get it out of the way because they've been waiting patiently. Yeah, thank you.
A lot of neighbors are waiting for that. A lot of people did show up that evening. I just want to say that I am not opposed to Greenwich Communities. I support the idea of housing, fair housing for people. I live next door to Greenwich Communities now, as we speak. And it is right, when you said earlier, people don't even know it's there. And that's a great thing because it fits into the neighborhood and into the community. So I think that's a fabulous model. I do not think that the proposed zero Strickland Road as it stands now is the appropriate model for our neighborhood for very many reasons, which we, you know, I have, I have pages and pages of, you know, sat through every P and Z meeting and lots and lots of questions. But there are many reasons why that is just too dense, too big for our little neighborhood. And just in the last few months, we've received several official letters about various things that are happening right there in our little area of Strickland Road. There's the Cos Cob pump station replacement, going to be a huge project. There's this proposed project for zero Strickland. There's the Cos Cob power plant. And there's the replacement of the Cos Cob train bridge. And there's I-95 happening as well. So it's all happening at once. It's a lot for everybody to take in. And I think that we have to consider those things too, and the timing of some of these projects. I know they all probably have to be done. But there's so many reasons why something could work in our neighborhood. But 48 two-bedroom units, right up against the highway, right up against the road, in a flood zone, that seems to be debatable, but I have lots of pictures and video. So I just want to put that out to you, Board of Selectmen, as, you know, a thought for... I know we want to curtail the 830G, but then I don't think that Greenwich Communities should come in with a project that feels like an 830G, in that it is too big and too dense for the neighborhood.
Thank you, Ann.
Thank you.
Yeah, and that's the reason why we want to do the public hearings and hear from you. And I know you're, you're very supportive of what they're doing there, what they're doing in town. And that's, and you live there, and I, and we're very sensitive to that. So obviously, that which you say, they certainly will obviously consider seriously. But anyway, I saw one other person, Mr. Wald, had his hand raised. And I think that's it, your last one.
My name is David Wald, and I just have a few questions there. One question was nighttime work, ever soars and everything. Is that 8:00 in the evening to 8:00 in the morning? Or is it 4:00 to 8:00? Or what is the time for night work?
They're all different. They, we get the health department involved with it, who's very concerned. They're very concerned about timing. So they have to weigh, you know, not only the time of year, right? Because if it's in summer, it's a little bit worse because windows are open, dining's going on outside. So their projects are a little bit different, each one. You have to look at them. But as you just heard before, the project that's going on right now, at least one night a week, they're dropping things off at a private developer's property. And the people, there's some people that live close there. So they're getting woken up at 2:30 or 3:00 in the morning. So we're trying to figure out a better spot for that, even though it's, I think I only said only another week or two of that heavy. It's still, it's, people are sleeping. So we're trying to figure out, but, and again, going forward, as you heard with me and Andrew Vento, we need more information on the one coming up. Because again, we, and we want to, that's why we will revisit it, and this project, every month to see what complaints we're getting, could it be amended a little bit, better timeline? So, yeah, they're all, they're all different.
Okay, now that was basically, my one question was, when we have one first reading, second reading, that if we're saying during the week or during the summer, that we have a timeframe? Or nighttime work, it's 12:00 to 4:00, or 4:00 to 8:00, or some, but anyway, that's good. This comes in, I think, overlapping with the agreement that was reached between the town and the complainants of the ADA compatible on Greenwich Avenue and Arch Street. That should have been done by the, by the spring, I think, of 2024. Is there any update? Would this be done at the same time?
Well, you know, I mean, several people, I think, including yourself, opposed the one two years ago when we got a $3 million grant, that it was approved several times over a year. And then you were one of, leading the way against it, and we lost the grant because you appealed to the RTM. So the money you appealed, saying that we don't need it, and ADA compliance was included in that, you ended up costing the people money because we have to pay for that now out of the taxpayers' fund. So I'm surprised you're asking the question because you were part of that group that did put out misinformation on it. And we warned you that that had to be... did put out misinformation on it, and we warned you that that had to be done. And it will get done, but we're pushed, we're, as you saw with the BET, I guess they're, they pushed that back a little bit, so we're pushing them again to make sure that these projects get done in a timely fashion before we get sued. So it's going to get done, so what you, what you opposed is going to get done anyway, but what you did is you cost us a lot of money.
Yeah, I take the blame for that.
Well, you're part of it, but anyway, any other questions, sir?
Anyway, yes, sir. I got off thought here, but I will address it to the last item that you brought up now. And I asked, prior to the meeting, I asked, what was the policy that you were discussing?
So I, and I already mentioned what the policy was, I just, at the beginning of the meeting, this is what I'm talking about, but wasting people's time. I've already told you what the policy is, and you continue to say the same things.
No, what I was going to finish my sentence with was, if we have an item on the agenda that doesn't have any backup material, everybody in this room will sign up for every item in case they come up with a question during the information that is shared. So me, for one, would do that at the Board of Selectmen meeting if there is no backup material presented prior to the meeting.
So no one has ever done that in, ever, in all these meetings? You're the only one that it's talked on most of the items. So if you want to sign up for the, you can absolutely do that, but no one else has done that but you.
I just have a clarifying question because when it's a second read, the assumption is, is that you'll look at the materials from the first read. We're not like sort of wasting paper and reprinting something that we already have a hard copy of. So is that, is it a second read or just anything in general?
Second read, and we'll come back to this, disinformation, we had a second read recently where the Board of Selectmen said they had received no comments, and multiple people said they had submitted comments. So I hope that that would also be in the presentation between first and second read, what you received of public comments.
Okay, any other, I don't, I don't know what he's talking about, but anyway, any other comments? We don't have any appointments or nominations, so I want to thank everybody for being here today. Is our motion to adjourn.
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Thanks, everybody, thanks, Ken, thanks, Jenny, thanks, Don.